Thank you. Let's call this meeting of the Aurora City Council for October 25th, 2022 to order. Madam Clerk, you call the roll.
Alderman Yamas.
Here.
Alderwoman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Messiacos.
Present.
Alderman Donnell.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville.
Here.
Alderwoman Hartburns.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bug.
Here.
Alderwoman Bate.
Here.
Alderman Warman.
Here.
Alderman Jenkins.
Here.
Mayor Irvin is present.
Mr. Mohammed.
Good evening, everyone. Let me begin by saying Happy Diwali to everyone. Big round of applause. It's Diwali 2022. We have so many special guests here tonight. And two of our special guests here tonight will help lead the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation. Our pledge tonight will be led by Anish Pathanachetti. He's a 10-year-old resident of Aurora, fourth grader at Owen Elementary School, Indian Prairie School District 204. He goes to a lot of cultural classes here with HSS Aurora. And since he was five years old, he studies Hindi language class. And we're going to talk a little bit tonight about the Seva Diwali Food Drive. At 10 years old, he went door-to-door the last few weeks requesting food to be donated for the food drive. He's at all the public events for the last year, become quite the young leader here in our community. To lead us in the pledge, please welcome Anish Pathanachetti.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Round of applause for... To lead us in the invocation is Ms. Maduri Gadhre. She's going to lead us right in the center, Ms. Maduri, with a Sanskrit verse very appropriate for the Diwali festival. She's an Aurora resident for the last 10 years and a volunteer with HSS Aurora, with Seva and many other events invocation by Maduri Gadhre.
So I'm here to say two slogans, one for Lord Ganesha and one for the Diwali. So we'll start with Lord Ganesha. Vakratunda mahakaya, surya koti samaprabha, nirvegnam, gurme deva, sarvakar yeshu sarvada. I'll read the meaning. Salutations to Sri Ganesha, who has a large body and whose splendor is similar to millions' suns. Oh, Deva, please make my undertakings free of obstacles by extending your blessings in all my works always. At the start of any auspicious work, we pray to Lord Ganesha and seek his blessings so that the work we undertake gets completed successfully without any hurdles. I'll say the second slogan, which is for Diwali, the lamps. Shubham karoti kalyanam, aarogyam dhanasampada, shatru buddhi vinaashaya, deepa jyotir namostute. The meaning? Salutations to the light of lamps, which brings auspiciousness, health, and prosperity, which destroys feelings of anonymity. Salutations to the light of lamps. On the auspicious occasion of Diwali, we give our salutations to the light that brings about knowledge and consciousness and helps us overcome ignorance. Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion to approve and appoint the sergeant in arms of the meeting? Motion made by Alderman Hartburns, seconded by Alderman Garza. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Mr. Mohammed, do we have any presentations this evening?
We do. We're going to ask that you come down, our Alderwoman of the 10th Ward, Alderwoman Schwertebay, and any other aldermen who'd like to join us. As we celebrate Diwali this year, the mayor will issue his annual proclamation. But we also are celebrating what we call the Seva Diwali Food Drive. Hindu Swamvishal Sangh, one of the great organizations here that we've worked with for a number of years, HSS Aurora is leading the Seva Diwali Food Drive, fostering togetherness and self-giving for the welfare of society by promoting the festive enlightening spirit of Diwali. We are going to issue the proclamation and ask some of our organizations to come down. More than 50, more than 50 organizations joined together for the food drive. We'll hear a little bit more about the results. But we're going to ask some of those organizations that we'll put up on the screen now, some of those organizations to come down. Accepting the proclamation is Harshari Gagasani. If she can come down, a junior at Matia Valley High School. She's a varsity tennis player, and she's been an HSS Aurora participant for the past nine years. Let's give a round of applause to Harshari Gagasani. Thank you. After the mayor issues the proclamation, we're going to ask her to say a few words. But we're also going to invite, if you are a member of the organizations listed on the screen, please join us down front and represent the Hindu community. Let's give them a round of applause as they make their way down. It's Diwali in the city of Aurora. Come on down, everyone. Including Anish, who led the pledge. We told him all the TV cameras were for him tonight, so he's super excited.
All right. It's my honor to read this proclamation for Diwali, the Festival of Lights, for October 24th, 2022. Whereas more than 1 billion celebrants worldwide observe the holy day of Diwali to mark the beginning of the Hindu New Year on October 24th, 2022. Whereas Diwali, the Festival of Light, symbolizes the victory of Dharma and good and evil, over evil, and is one of the most celebrated festivals in the world. It signifies a special time of peace and serenity with the hope of building bridges, of understanding and tearing down barriers, of intolerance. And whereas the City of Aurora Indian American Community Outreach Advisory Board hosted the first citywide Diwali festival in Aurora in 2014 and looks forward to another successful celebration this year. And whereas the annual community-wide Seva Diwali Food Drive, led by HSS Aurora, embodies the true spirit of Diwali and is supported by over 50 organizations. Therefore, I, Mayor Richard C. Irvin, Mayor of the City of Aurora, do hereby recognize the historical and religious significance of Diwali, proclaim the city's acknowledgement of October 24th, 2022, as Diwali, and commit to the city's support to our Hindu community. Let's give them a round of applause.
I'm going to bring in for our picture. And we're going to ask Harshashri from Matia Valley to share a few words as well.
Namaste and good evening, everyone. My name is Hersha Gagasani. I am an 11th grader from Matia Valley High School. As we Hindu Americans living in Aurora, we want to say thank you to Mayor Richard Irving and the city council members and staff for recognizing the efforts of Hindu Swamvishal Sangh, also known as HSS, and Seva International with the Seva Diwali Proclamation. I've been with HSS for roughly 12 years now and Seva International for two. Both organizations have given me the tools to openly express my ideas about my religion and have taught me how to be a valuable and effective citizen within the Aurora community. Seva itself means selfless service to the betterment of the community overall. As a part of Seva Diwali, we collect non-perishable canned and boxed food items and donate them to shelters like Aurora Interfaith Food Pantry, Deborah's Place, Loaves and Fishes, and many more. The main goal of Seva Diwali is to eradicate hunger and fulfill the main purpose of Diwali, to chase away the darkness and spread happiness. Diwali is a festival of togetherness and enlightenment. With Seva Diwali, we aim to connect our tradition and our beliefs with our community and prosper universal oneness. HSS International and Seva International have been partners for a really long time, working together in highway and drain cleanups, all the way to providing feminine products, masks, food, and love during the COVID pandemic. While helping others, it is also very important to take care of yourself. Our daily yoga sessions at 6:00 AM, followed by our major yoga-thon in January, make sure that our volunteers are in a tip-top shape. During Raksha Bandhan, an end-dick holiday where sisters tie a rakhi, a symbol of love and protection, to celebrate the brother and sister bond and protect one another. HSS volunteers tie rakhi to our first responders from the police and fire departments, thanking them for the protection they provide. Last year itself, we were able to collect over 1,000 pounds of food for the Seva Diwali Drive. This year, we strive for an even higher number. So I urge everyone to donate at least a pound of food at any of our drop-up locations before November 6th and help make sure someone else's Diwali is as prosperous as ours. Thank you.
From City of Aurora, City of Lights, I want to wish everybody a very happy Diwali. This festival is to celebrate not just yourself. It is to celebrate with your neighbors, friends, and anybody and everybody you know. Just try to make them happy, and that will make you happy. So just happy Diwali, everyone. Thank you.
And before you take your seat, I know they have special treats, sweet treats for Diwali for all of our city council members. So we'll leave those and bring those to your seats. Our Indian American Community Outreach Advisory Board, I know there are a number of members here and standing up. The annual Diwali Festival will be on Saturday, Saturday, November 5th, at 4:30, from 4:30 to 7:30 at Fox Valley Malls. It will be absolutely fabulous, so we invite the entire community out to celebrate with us as they continue the Seva Diwali Food Drive through November 6th. So November 5th will be a great time to bring food right to the mall during the Diwali Festival. Another round of applause for HSS Aurora, for our Hindu community of Aurora, to the greater Indian community of Aurora. We thank you. As you take your seats, we do have proclamations. The proclamations have all of the names of the organizations scripted in the proclamation. So please pick up your proclamation. Thank you for your service, and thank you for bringing so much good of culture and civic responsibility and duty here to the city of Aurora. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, yes, thank you. They're going to bring your Diwali treats.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Happy Diwali. Thank you again and happy Diwali. Let's go on to the next portion of our agenda. Mayor appointments. Madam Clerk, will you read the first item under mayor appointments?
22-0790, Resolution approving the appointment of Ava Parks to the Aurora Youth Council. Second?
There's been a motion made by Alderman Hartburns and Alderman Franco. Are there any questions or discussions regarding the resolution? There being none, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Messiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderwoman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bate?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
12 yes, zero no.
Motion carries. The resolution approves. Is that Ms. Ava Parks there? All right, give her a round of applause.
Oh, that's right. Alderman Bug's already there. She's from Oswego East there. So representative, take a quick picture with the mayor and Ava and Alderman Bug.
Absolutely. Come on in, please. Take a picture. Another round of applause for Ms. Parks. All right, we are done with our presentations and mayor appointments. So at this point, if anyone was just here for the presentations and the mayor appointments, I'll give you an opportunity to leave if you'd like before we start the regular portion of the agenda. Sure, Ms. Parks has to be ready for school tomorrow. All right, so good that everybody else is going to stay and participate in this rest of the meeting with us. The next portion of our agenda is public comments. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
Will you please read the rules of public comment?
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the city council for up to three minutes, with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted for all public comment. No person, other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order, may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the city council shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Madam Clerk, will you read the name of the first person wishing to offer public comment?
David Cannon.
Mr. Cannon, you have three minutes to speak, beginning now.
Council people, I present to you today a petition gathered online asking Mayor Irvin and the city council to reject the current proposed casino deal that gives upwards of $68 million in public bond money and land to a private corporation with the promise that the casino will pay us back over 23 years through tax increment financing on the new property. In less than nine days, 550 community members have signed. To put that figure into perspective, Emmanuel Yamas, that's more the people than voted for you in 2019. Wani Garza, that's more people than voted for you in 2021. Ted Messiacos, that's more people than voted for you in 2019. Michael Seville, that's more people than voted for you in 2019. Shakita Hartburns, that's more people than voted for you in 2021. And in the coming weeks and months, I'm sure that we will see more signatures on this petition than all of the rest of you have managed in the past. I have only one question for you this week. Who do you think you work for? It's not Richard C. Irvin. And it's certainly not Penn Entertainment Incorporated. You work for Auroraans. And in the course of less than two weeks, they've told you loud and clear that this deal is unacceptable. We unequivocally ask you to reject the current deal, seek community input before you sign a contract, not after, and ask the mayor's Office of Economic Development to come back with a better proposal that doesn't give our money and land away to a greedy corporation. Please do not gamble our money away. Signed, 550 of your neighbors. And as you can see, as I promised last week, I've returned with this absurdly sized, absurdly large-numbered check. And if you vote this proposal through, I insist that you sign this check. If not, this check will be around town for the next five months. You will close your eyes and all you will see is the check. Again, I humbly implore you to table this ordinance and send it back to the mayor's Office of Economic Development to fix. Too many questions remain and too many dollars stand to be sucked out of our community for this to pass, as is. Thank you so much.
Madam Clerk, do we have any additional speakers?
We do. The next speaker is Matthew Orr.
Mr. Orr, you have three minutes to speak, beginning now.
Thank you. I'm sure it's obvious why I'm standing up here. It's because I'm against the current redevelopment agreement of the casino that will be moved out to Farnsworth. Make it be noted that I'm not against moving the casino. I am against giving over $60 million away to a corporation that has made over $2.7 billion in gross profits just last year alone. CEO making over $60 million just in one year alone. Let's look at what we are doing. We are giving people that make billions of dollars off gambling more of our money that could be going towards school districts, that could be going towards library districts, that could be going towards the Fox Valley Park District. We are giving away our money to big corporations. We have done this with projects all throughout the city of Aurora. We have been tiffing everything. We've tiffed Route 59. We've tiffed downtown. We're going to tiff this probably because I'm guaranteed that it's going to pass tonight based off all of what you guys have been saying. And what are we going to do? We are going to, at some point in the near future, have to look at raising taxes because we are not going to be able to continue this reckless amount of spending that the Richard Irvin administration has been doing. These are just points that I look at, and I don't understand how people, especially the aldermen here, can stand up and not come back to the constituents with better answers. Don't listen to the Economic Development Office. Listen to what the residents, listen to the 550 people here in just nine days alone that have stood up and said, "We don't approve of this. We need a better deal." How about give them the land? I'm fine with that. Give them $10 million in land. Some of the
...taxpayer do not want my local government to be handing out financial assistance to a multi-billion dollar publicly traded corporation that their whole business model is built on losses of those in our community. Today, I am asking that this council table this item, take the offer of the TIF and the $50 million bond off the table, and actually hold real public meetings with your constituents so they can ask the questions that they want answered before you pass any other funding or any other measures regarding this.
Whose house?
As our elected officials, you are supposed to represent us and look out for our best interests. And when I say our best interests, I don't mean what you think our best interests are. I mean what we tell you our best interests are, what we need as a community. As a community organizer, I have learned that when you meet a community member that is in need, you ask them what they need. You don't tell them what they need. For the last several years, I've watched as this body has, as we cry out for more affordable housing, this body approves luxury apartments that no one in Aurora can afford. I've also watched as this body, as our community, asked emphatically and overwhelmingly for a no puppy mill ordinance, and this body made the excuse not to pass it because they figured, well, a few months of puppy mill dogs being sold was fine because the state was going to ban it eventually. I'm tired of the city council consistently ignoring its constituents and focusing their time on large corporations and developers. It seems that many of us are. This last message is for my community.
Thank you, Madam. Your time is up. Madam Clerk, will you call the next speaker?
Next speaker is Leo Wright.
Mr. Wright, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Leo Wright. I'm a 26-year resident of Aurora's 10th Ward, and I'm here in favor of this development. I believe this is going to bring a world-class development to an I saw along Farnsworth. It's going to bring hundreds of well-paying union jobs.
And non-union.
And it's going to bring hundreds of permanent jobs once this casino is established. So, as a senior vice president of H-Passion, one of the largest construction firms in the Midwest, I support this measure, and I urge the council to approve this casino. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to give a warning, you know, that we're not going to have these outbursts here in city council. If our sergeant RMCs people giving these silly outbursts, we're going to remove them from council. Madam Clerk, do we have additional speakers?
We do, Mr. Mayor. The next speaker is Court Carlson.
Ms. Carlson, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. My name is Court Carlson. I am the executive director of the Aurora Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, and we are the independent and state-certified destination marketing organization for the city of Aurora and nine other communities in the region. I'm here on behalf of the Aurora Area CVB and here to express support for the proposed relocation of the Hollywood Casino Aurora and development of a new luxury hotel and entertainment complex in I-88 and Farnsworth Avenue corridor. Continued growth in regional tourism and hospitality is dependent on a development of new attractions and visitor services and creating additional reasons for travelers to visit the Aurora area. Facing increasing competition, this move will breathe new life into the existing Aurora Casino and bring to the city additional opportunities for tourism development and growth with entertainment and conference facilities that are not currently available and will complement and support existing hospitality-related businesses and other regional destination drivers. I look forward to the new Hollywood Casino Aurora and ushering in a new era of tourism for the region. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, call the next speaker.
Ken Nearing.
Ken Nearing. Call the next speaker.
Shannon Cameron.
Ms. Cameron, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Good evening. I hope you will make a motion to table this vote tonight and urge city staff to come up with a better deal for the citizens of Aurora. But I'm a realist, and I know this body will probably unanimously vote this through. However, feel free to surprise me. I've decided to spend my time in public comments asking you to think about how you will use a supposed newfound revenue that comes from this deal. The city has done a lot of economic development since I moved here in 2017, and because of that, our tax revenues should be increasing significantly. So now I need our new, I need our city staff and elected officials to start committing to solving some of the underlying issues of our city. We've lined the pockets of millionaires and will soon line the pockets of billionaires with this vote. Now let's make sure we take care of our community. I work with the very poor of our community on a daily basis, hard-working people with families that are doing everything in their power to survive in this community, yet so many of them need affordable housing, food, reliable transportation, livable wage jobs, healthcare, and more. If the casino is as profitable as you all promised it to be, and if this is as good deal as you promised the citizens of Aurora that it is, then please take the revenue and do the following. Number one, solve homelessness. Other cities are doing it. Look at Houston, Texas, moving 25,000 people off the streets and into homes. Think of what we could do, we could save in police calls, medical bills, et cetera. However, we also could build affordable housing. One half of 1% of available rentals in this city are available to rent right now. That's it. And I'm willing to bet that few to none would be considered affordable. I work with hundreds that tell me they simply can't find a place to live or being priced out of Aurora in their current living situation. I can't find shelter to take them to because they are at capacity here, and I'm feeling so frustrated and not knowing where to turn, but I will not be another face that fails them in this community. Let's solve homelessness together. I will be your biggest cheerleader, and I promise to help you. Let's solve local hunger. Thousands of Aurorans are hungry. Skyrocketing food prices and looming recession means community fridges and the local food pantries can't stock shelves, and hundreds of new families are coming in the doors each month. What are you doing to ensure more aren't suffering in our community? Make a commitment to the programs and insystemic reasons for poverty and food insecurity. Keeping kids and families fed will keep kids developing, learning, and reaching their full potential. It'll keep them out of the prison industrial complex and make for a great future of high-tax-paying citizens. You have the power to do this, and again, I promise to help all of you do it. My last promise is to hold you accountable that the revenue for these new projects go back to helping the citizens of Aurora have better lives, not just help keep rich people richer, but truly benefit those that are the most vulnerable in our community. I love Aurora. I love its people, and I don't want to see them hurting anymore. Think of the legacy that is possible if all of you center your decisions around what is best for the most vulnerable person in our community instead of what is best for the most privileged in our community. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, will you call the next speaker?
Nathan Shepherd.
Nathan Shepherd, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
So hi, my name is Nathan Shepherd. I live on Ward Eight, and I'm not going to be obvious. We're all talking about the casino here. Let's be realistic. We're going to be basically wasting $60 million of our own money on this project when, as Shannon just said five seconds ago, that people are in need of housing. And let's be simple like this. Remember last week how you guys were talking about economic development and how this is going to be a really good thing for economic development? Let me give you another thing that's actually really good for economic development. Affordable housing in the downtown core, which Irvin you said was one of your main campaign goals. So, what do I mean by that? We could spend the $50 million of that municipal bond and the $60 million that we're going to make Penn pay for that land, and we're going to build affordable housing in the two parking lots on River Street that they contractually have to give. That isn't part of the RDA. That was in the contract that they originally signed. So, we can build affordable housing there with commercial space on the bottom level of that. Because, well, how is that economic development, you might ask? Well, pretty easy, actually. You have people that are living up in the upper levels that are living in a affordable area, and on those bottom levels, you have commercial space that people could be working at, or they're going to be spending money in the downtown core region. It is not hard math. You can look at any development. So, I ask the city council to vote no on giving $50 million away to a corporation that made $2.7 billion worth of gross profit last year, $420 million for their shareholders, and $65 million for their CEO. So, vote no on that. Vote, do not give them free land. Make them pay for it. It is $10 million. We should not be giving that away for free. It is really good land that they could be using, and that I am very proud that it's going to be built by union jobs as well, but the jobs at the casino after it's built should be union as well and with a living wage. And last thing, have some sort of public forum. That is the main demand that we have here. Have a public forum. That doesn't mean having a forum two days after the vote, but that means having it a couple days beforehand and having an open discussion with your community. And obviously, I know you guys, you're probably going to vote yes on this anyways and let slide. So, let's put it simple like this. A friendly reminder is that February, I mean April, is coming up in a few months now, and that's when elections are coming up. So, we have 500 petition signs signed this month, and that's going to be keeping increasing. So, we have momentum. We have the power on our side because this is our house. This is supposed to be the government for the people, by the people, not by the rich and powerful. Because whose house is this?
Our house!
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, call the next speaker.
Nicole Mullins.
Ms. Mullins, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Hello, everyone. I'm really confused because I, have we decided that Penn cannot afford this on their own, and this would not happen without us? Because I don't understand why all the tradespeople are speaking up as if we're not going to have those opportunities unless city council chips in money. So, that really is confusing to me. I think we all want the trades to be supported. I think we all want the trades to have safe jobs. I don't think anyone from the speakers would be against that. So, I'm super confused. So, with that being said, The Beacon News printed an article October 14th by Denise Crosby. In it, she talks about how when the casino came aboard in 1993, when I was in eighth grade, that they were going to bring all of these wonderful, great things. And the Beacon News article also states that that did not end up happening. I believe they just started paying taxes towards District 131, which is where I went to school this year, and I'm 43. So, I'm not really sure how future developments in that property are going to convincingly tell us, yeah, property taxes is going to go to District 131, and it's going to be wonderful. We'll probably be dead by then. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, will you call the next speaker?
Rachel Peters.
Ms. Peters, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Good evening. I'm here to, we're a local contractor, women-owned, women-run. I'm in the union myself, and we're signatory with the four main, or four significant unions, and we're just here to show our support. I'm also an advocate for women in construction out of Chicago, and just to express the amount of apprenticeship opportunities and programs having a development of this size here in Aurora where we'd like to see it stay, and also the, you know, the offshoot projects for us construction companies that come from this. You know, it doesn't just stop with this one big development. It continues to offer us other opportunities. So, we're here to see it go through. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, will you call the next speaker?
Brian Hooker.
Mr. Hooker, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Brian Hooker. I'm a representative of the Mid-America Carpenter Council, Council of Carpenters, I'm sorry. I'm here in support of the casino, to the relocation and the expansion. I think it'll be a wonderful opportunity for the city, economic growth, and quite a tourist attraction, and I just appreciate we'll be there for you in the end. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, will you call the next speaker?
Ram Yagi.
Mr. Yagi, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Richard Erwin and City Council, and happy Diwali, everyone. I'm a 17-year resident of Aurora, and I'm representing here Ward One, and the community is from Cambridge Countryside, which is between Butterfield and the Builder. You are our representative alderman, and I'm a proud parent, so I'll start with that. I have two boys, and my older boy represented Mattia Valley all year, all four years estate, and my younger one is a tennis player. He's a top 200 tennis player. But can you believe it? In order to get them to the tennis club, every day I need to drive 30 to 40 minutes from one side. So, to and forth, I'm driving more than one hour. Why? Because we don't have any tennis complex nearby area. So, do we need to invest into the sports and education, or we need to invest into the casino? That is the answer I'm asking. If you are building the casino near the outlet mall, it's going to create heavy traffic load in the communities that live nearby, and it's going to create environment which will not fit for the residential buildings that are created there for another purpose. We moved in that area so that our kids can get better education or better environment for their sports. We adults also go and play in the nearby fields. Why don't we build more tennis courts? Why don't we build more volleyball courts? Why are we building casinos? What are we going to get by building casinos? That is the question I'm asking the city council today. Are we going to create a safer environment? No, we are not, because casino going to increase the criminal activities in the area. If you see the research that has been done in the Las Vegas and other areas, wherever you have the casinos, the criminal rates are rising. The literacy rate is going down. So, we need to start thinking about our future. This is land of Lincoln, and what Lincoln said, that we need to invest into the education because today's education is going to build tomorrow's future. So, we need to decide, Mayor Richard Erwin, are we investing into the future, or are we investing into the gambling, which is going to disrupt our kids' life? Thank you so much.
Madam Clerk, will you call the next speaker?
Francis Cedro.
Ms. Cedro, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Hi, this is actually directed to my fellow citizens of Aurora. You know, you've heard all, you've heard everything that my co-organizers and I have had to say. They keep making the narrative about whether or not we want a casino or the existence of a casino. That is not what we're questioning. We are questioning why 68 million has to go to a multi-billion dollar corporation that can afford this project on their own. They have three other developments in progress right now. They do not need 68 million. You know, I live in Ward Eight. I understand how privileged I am, and it upsets me, though, that I just have to drive like 10 minutes west, and that those resources are not shared with the residents there. It's upsetting. It's racist, to be completely honest. I don't appreciate this parade of, you know, taking out minorities and like showing how much you care about them, and then you do something like this, which will affect them the most. This is all I need to say about this, and I'm glad, you know, that you're going to be hiring union to build this, but we need union jobs after this is built. Because I assume you are going to not table this. So, we need union jobs. We need these to be local union jobs. Like, are these people residents of Aurora? Are they, you know, will they be protected? Are they going to benefit from this? Are their children going to benefit this? Is Ram still going to be driving 40 minutes to take his son to tennis practice? That's all I need to say. I thank you all for being here tonight.
Call the next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Judd Loefje.
Judd Loefje, call the next speaker.
Jim Buzzard.
Mr. Buzzard, you have about, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Several years ago, you guys were totally willing to let the West Branch of the Aurora Public Library just disappear. It was a done deal, as quoted by the mayor on TV. So, we started a referendum to keep our West Branch, and the overwhelming outpouring yard signs and petitions kind of convinced the library board to forego those plans. And on the day they did that, my alderman, Carl Franco, agreed that we should keep the West Branch where it's at. We need a referendum for any type of bond issue of this nature. It needs to be voted on by the residents of the city of Aurora. Exactly. It needs to be voted on. We need to have this tabled until the election in April. Thank you.
That concludes our public speaking for this evening. That concludes our public speaking for this evening. Let's go on to the next portion of the agenda. Let's go on to the consent agenda. Prior to the hearing of both consent agendas and the direct consent agenda and the direct council contingent and the consent agenda, Madam Clerk, please remove items 22-0589 and 22-0591 from the consent agenda and place those items on unfinished business.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. All right, after the removal of items 22-0589 and 22-0591, Madam Clerk, will you please call, read both agendas?
22-0195, a resolution requesting approval to provide $100,000 in funding to continue providing internet access to remote community learning centers for low-income kids and residents throughout the city of Aurora. Total amount will not exceed $100,000 annually. 22-0715, a resolution approving the Fourth Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement between the city of Aurora, the city of Naperville, and the Naperville Township Road District to widen North Aurora Road in the vicinity of the CN Railway Crossing and to appropriate $290,000 of MFT funds for the project. 22-0746, an ordinance amending Chapter 15 of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to the solicitation and acceptance of public or private donations by city officers and employees. 22-0750, a resolution authorizing well-maintenance services for well number 26 for the Water Production Division in an amount not to exceed $70,000 to Lane Christensen Company, Aurora, Illinois. 22-0754, a resolution approving a preliminary plan for Lot 1 of Pacifica Riverview subdivision on property located at 309 North River Street and a portion of 201 North River Street being at the southeast corner of Vine Street and North River Street. 22-0766, a resolution requesting approval for equipment transfer agreement with Sprintcom LLC, a Kansas limited liability company for the communication shelter located at 1325 West Indian Trail Road. 22-0768, a resolution to award a contract to Dom Mechanical Industries Incorporated for the main pump station, pump number four, replacement project in the amount of $67,000 for the Water Production Division. 22-0769, a resolution authorizing the purchase of replacement vehicles for the city of Aurora fleet from various vendors through Sourcewell in the amount of $1,676,567. 22-0785, an ordinance annexing property located at 652 Hartford Avenue to the city of Aurora, Illinois 60506. 22-0804, a resolution authorizing new commercial lease agreements with Jolene Ryan, doing business as Jumpin' Java Coffee for commercial space at the Aurora Transportation Center and Route 59 train stations. 22-0805, a motion authorizing and directing the Chief Human Resources Officer to execute a settlement agreement on behalf of the city and workers' compensation claim number 188232501. 22-0812, a resolution authorizing the execution of documents with the Community Foundation of the Fox River Valley to establish a designated fund to be known as the Financial Empowerment Center Fund. 22-0813, a resolution authorizing a new commercial lease agreement with Antonio Chavez, doing business as Tony's Hair Stop for commercial space at the Aurora Transportation Center. 22-0818, a resolution requesting approval to utilize existing emergency telephone system board funds to purchase 40 GTAC portable computers and associated accessories for use by the Aurora Public Safety Departments from CDWG Corporation in Vernon Hills, Illinois. 22-0819, a resolution authorizing the execution of a restatement and amendment of Declaration of Restrictive Covenants between the city of Aurora and the Support Companies LLC for the real property located at 1 East Benton Street. 22-0827, approval over the minutes of the Tuesday, October 11, 2022, city council meeting. 22-0839, a resolution accepting the dedication of a stormwater control easement located at 425 East New York Street.
There's been a motion by Alderman Hartburns to accept both the consent agenda and direct to council consent agenda, and seconded by Alderman Garza, before we entertain those. Are there any questions or motions to remove any items, other items, from either the direct-to-council consent agenda or the consent agenda? There being no questions or motions to remove items from either agenda, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
12 yes, 0 no.
Motion carries. The direct-to-council consent agenda and the consent agenda are both approved. Let's go on to the next portion of the agenda unfinished business. Before we get into the, I asked the clerk to call the first items, which will be the items that were removed from the consent agenda. I'd like to state that Diwali represents a new year. You know, it's very apropos that tonight, these items on the unfinished section of the agenda represent new opportunities and possibilities for Aurora. In fact, they don't just represent new opportunities. They represent opportunities that were once unheard of, undiscussed, and unimaginable for our city. Residential living on our riverfront, a resort with casino hotel, event center, and so much more. This is not the beginning of envisioning of a new Aurora. This is the continuation of what we have consistently been doing for the past five years. We are energized, re-energizing our city. We are redeveloping our city. We are reimagining our city. We are no longer talking about just the potential in Aurora. We are talking about the plans that are unfolding daily all over our town. The first item on the unfinished section of the agenda related to the new Pacifica Riverview community on the west bank of the riverfront. And let me first thank the Windfall Group, Mr. Eddie Ne, Ms. Judy Ne, and the entire team of Windfall for their commitment to Aurora. And we have seen firsthand their transformative work at Pacifica Square on the far east side by the Fox Valley Mall. We look forward to watching Pacifica Riverview set a new foundation for economic development in downtown Aurora. The Windfall Group has been an exceptional corporate citizen, contributing to the economic development success in our city. They have also contributed significantly to our cultural tapestry, bringing new celebrations, festivals, new cultures, and connections to the city. You know, as you vote to approve, city council members, if you vote to approve the new Pacifica Riverview community on the west bank, let me remind you of the last November's historic vote, just last November, historic vote to approve the DAC development on the east bank. So, not only are we going to have new development on the west bank, we're going to have new development on the east bank, which we plan on breaking ground on that in just a couple weeks. With both developments connecting, the pedestrian bridge, the vision to revive and reimagine our downtown continues to unfold and is having a domino effect on all of Aurora. And it is brought up, and I got to address this, our affordable housing. We just did a groundbreaking, just the other day, of new two affordable housing developments that'll be happening here in the city of Aurora, reusing old schools that have sat empty and dilapidated in our community. With both developments connected, with all these developments connected, and as we bring new developments along the river and throughout our city, tonight, there's another opportunity to redevelop the current downtown casino property by relocating, expanding the Hollywood Casino of Aurora. You know, since the Hollywood Casino of Aurora opened in downtown Aurora nearly 30 years ago, much has changed in the gaming industry, including the laws that require casinos to be located on the river. You know, we in Aurora were responsible for changing that law and making sure that they could go land-based so we could have this facility that's going to be built on Farnsworth. Tonight's redevelopment agreement results from careful and deliberate process of research, evaluation, alternatives, and negotiations, and collecting data and evidence for over four years. And let me thank Penn Entertainment for its collaboration and proposed investment in the city of Aurora. With a portfolio of properties throughout North America, Penn Entertainment knows the industry very well and has multiple options to relocate and expand properties throughout different cities, states, and regions, yet they are going to invest $300 million in different cities, states, and regions, yet they are going to invest $300 million in the city of Aurora. Not only are they aware of the current downtown trends at Hollywood Casino and its downward, and its downtown location and downward revenues, they see the well-researched plans and possibilities for relocation of Farnsworth Avenue and a new future. They see a new vision. They see the future, you know, that now we are being, that we are participating in. And now they are, as the old proverb says, putting their money where their mouth is and bringing 300 million, 300 million to the table, and the guaranteed paying back, guaranteed paying back of the bond that the city of Aurora issues, the city will bring to the table, their guarantee that's going to be paid back. We have discussed the overall financial benefits of the city of Aurora, and our team will expound on some of those this evening. But as we have, as we have watched, our gaming fund decreased consistently over the years, where it went from Aurora having $17 million of gaming fund, much of it we use for our communities, our wards, and our community services, like our homeless that we give to, like our food banks that we give to every year, you know, we have discussed, we have discussed the overall financial benefit to the city. But as we have watched, you know, we've done everything in the city to make sure that we improve our city. We're encouraged to see that the millions of dollars that is projected increase in gaming that will have a direct impact on our entire communities, still, ward funds, still, quality of life grants, still, social programs, still, social services, still, even more so, educational technology and capital improvement projects. That includes partnering with our school districts, specifically 131, to ensure fairness, equity, and continued support. I am a graduate of 131 myself, going to continue to support my school district. This only scratches the surface of the impact this relocation expansion will have on Aurora as a whole. You know, this is a part of a pathway to yes, a pathway that we talked about walking down years ago when I was first elected to office. And not only, you know, support of this development gets us to where we need to be, I encourage, you know, all of the city, continue to grow, and the city council members, to continue to walk down that pathway of yes with us all. Aurora will continue to get better and better, and we'll continue to grow more and more. This is the future that was once, once unimaginable to most. You know, there is something happening here. There's something happening here. We can, we can see it happening right before our eyes, and we're going to continue to work to make it happen. Madam Clerk, will you call the first item on the agenda?
22-0589, an ordinance establishing a constitutional use, a conditional use plan development and approving the Pacifica Riverview Plan Description for the property located at 309 North River Street and a portion of 201 North River Street being at the southeast corner of Vine Street and North River Street.
There's been a motion by Alderman Hardburns, seconded by Alderman Garza. Are there any questions or discussions on this brand-new development in the city of Aurora? There being none, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Please remove that lady, please, hold on a second, clerk. Please remove that lady from council.
No more money to billionaires!
Please remove that gentleman right there that's been disrupted the whole time. My four-year-old, my four-year-old dances just like that. Sometimes I sing along with him.
I'm going to give you jobs, but not to this joker, this joker!
Respect the mayor!
Yeah, could I have a chat? Thank you!
All right, Madam Clerk, let's get back on with business. Will you please call the roll?
All right, this is for item 22-0589. Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderwoman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries. That ordinance is adopted. Madam Clerk, read the next item, which is also the Pacifica Riverview Subdivision.
22-0591, a resolution approving a preliminary plat for Pacifica Riverview Subdivision on property located at 309 North River Street and 201 North River Street.
There's a motion made by Alderman Hardburns, seconded by Alderman Franco. Any questions or discussions on this item? There being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderwoman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. Let's give them a round of applause. Can the representatives from Windfall Group please join me down at the table so we can have a signing? And go down this economic development journey together. The Alderman from that ward, please join me as well. You know, again, the gentleman sitting next to me is, name's Eddie Knee, and he's the individual that's also doing the, that is in the first phase, working on the second phase of development at Pacifica Square by the Outlet Mall. This gentleman has invested in, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the Fox Valley Mall, Pacifica Square, where he has invested millions and millions of dollars in the city of Aurora because he believes in the direction that we're going in, and he believes in the city, and wants to do even more by investing tens of millions of more dollars in this new development in our downtown on riverfront, which was unheard of just a few years ago. So we appreciate Mr. Knee and his team, his daughter and his team, and the Alderman of the ward, Mike Seville, of supporting this, and I'd like to sign this resolution right Let's give them a round of applause.
I would like to say thank you for the city of Aurora, for the support. The project will be breaking ground next year. Now it's under design stage. And beside this, the Pacifica Square on Route 59 in Aurora, the Phase 2 will be breaking ground also next year. Thank you so much, everyone, for the support.
Another round of applause. Madam Clerk, can you read the next item under unfinished business?
22-0820, an ordinance authorizing a redevelopment agreement for the Hollywood Casino Development in the city of Aurora, Illinois. Second?
There's been a motion by Alderman Jenkins to adopt this ordinance, seconded by Alderman Hardburns. There will be a short presentation.
Good evening, Alderman. My name is Alex Alexandra. I'm the Chief Management Officer for the City of Aurora. We wanted tonight to provide a high-level overview. We've given a lot of information to each of you over the last month or so. We gave a beginning of a comprehensive presentation at the Finance Committee and then last week at COW. So first and foremost, in response to Alderman Yamas's request to clarify the original deal from 1991, the agreement that the city made with the casino at that time. Number one, Penn and not the city of Aurora owns the current land. Number two, there was no and there is no obligation for Penn to demolish or clear the site. So hopefully, Alderman Yamas, that answers your concerns. I know that there have been several, I'll call them interpretations of that original deal, but we went back, pulled everything, looked at it, had independent outside council look at it, and those were the two conclusions. Let's next talk about the bond. The bond is not a bailout. Bailout is defined as financial assistance to a failing business. It's not a handout. A handout is defined as free money to a person or an organization. It's not a grant. A grant simply is a gift. None of those things apply to this project, and none of those terms have any expected payback. The city's investment of $50 million bond represents 16% of the $360 million project cost. Penn is covering 84%. Now, at the beginning of this process, this originally was a $250 million project, and the city was being asked to contribute 50 million through the issuance of a bond. And I'm going to define further the purpose of that bond to clarify for everyone in a minute. Because of the environment we're in, inflation, supply chain, post-COVID, and to Penn's credit, they're going back after discussions with the city, negotiations with the city, and doing further visioning and reimagining of the project, the project came back at $360 million. The casino, Penn, did not ask us to cover any more than the original contribution through our bond. So the city bond is really an investment for a definite return on investment that is based in large part on past performance and a very well-reasoned, well-researched future projection on a number of key factors that I'm also going to cover tonight because that has been brought up repeatedly as well. What are these projections based on? So let me be clear. This is not being paid out of any current city budget line item. It's not being paid out of any cash reserves. It's not taking away from any existing funding for programs or services, nor any that are planned in the future. The reason that's true is because but for this redevelopment agreement, there is no bond. There is no bond if there's no casino. The payback of the bond is guaranteed by Penn in the redevelopment agreement, plain and simple. The money to pay back the bond comes from the casino development. So let me again be clear. There is no, there isn't $58 million sitting in an account in the city right now that we have discretionary use for. The money comes from the bond that is related to the RDA. That's the actual deal. The bond issue funds the TIF that pays the project expenses. Now, there were several points in our long negotiations with a long-respected partner that we've had in this community for over 30 years, that there were several points of no return for the city team. One of them was guaranteeing the bond from a debt service perspective and guaranteeing to pay it back in full. That was unequivocally a deal breaker. Secondly, because property tax, we know, needed to be at a certain level to achieve that payback, we did not budge from a minimum amount of 5 and 1/4 million dollars in property tax, minimum. And Penn is guaranteeing that minimum, meaning, very plain and simple, that if the 5 and 1/4 million property tax level falls anywhere below it at any time, Penn will pay us the difference. So essentially, not only is this as close to a guarantee as we can negotiate, but it essentially, there are no city funds coming out of pocket. So hopefully, that clarifies for all of you and the community the actual deal and the deal points. Now, the mayor talked about the careful and deliberate process, and it was. We had to navigate through the effects of COVID, through the casino closing. And let's remind everyone that the four major sources of revenue in this community, like it or not, they're the ones that we have, were the Fox Valley Mall, the casino, the Premium Outlet Mall, and now the fourth one, Justice Game. And Acca Paramount. No offense to our friends at Acca Paramount. Those four are our leading sources of revenue. So so far, before COVID, during COVID, since COVID, we have managed to get them back open. They are not only open, but they're thriving. The casino, however, past presentations to you and public information every year in our budget process shows the downward trajectory of the gaming fund. So let, again, let's revisit what the gaming fund has meant to this community, what it covers, and what the future holds. And this is not a referendum, many of you, we've talked about this, this is not a 2022 referendum on gaming. That happened 30 years ago when this community took those steps and brought a casino to Aurora. And in those 30 years, the casino has contributed $300 million to this community. Now, unlike other communities, it did not go to brick and mortar, it didn't go to salaries, it didn't go to vehicle purchases, it went as follows. Aldermanic ward funds, quality of life grants, capital improvement projects for our community, social programs and services, educational technology, $300 million to this community. If there was no casino, there is no 300 million to go to those specific purposes that the city council, back in the day, directed it to. And for the 22 years I've been here, every year, we have not changed that gaming tax focus. In fact, you all have made sure we enhance it, and you all have made sure that staff pushes the envelope on how we can spend and find more opportunities for those noble purposes for this community. Why? Because it affects all residents equally across the city. Now, let's talk about all the ancillary benefits. Food and beverage tax increase, hotel tax. We are tired of watching hotel taxes going to other communities. When we do such an amazing job, you, Court Carlson from the Convention Visitors Bureau, spearheads a team with the Park District that promotes sports for our region and for the city. However, the hotel taxes go elsewhere. So now, one of the other game changers for our team was, this casino couldn't be a run-of-the-mill casino. No offense to the present setup, but it's old, it's antiquated, it's outdated, and the data and evidence prove it by the declining revenue. We're going down to potentially $3.7 million if we do nothing. Now, where are we going to find the average of $10 million a year that the, in its heyday, the casino was bringing us on average? Or actually, sorry, the average of the 30 years? Are we going to take it, are you going to, are we going to come to you and say, in order to do all those things, we have to cut general fund? Cut essential services? That's absurd. We're not going to do that. We would never do that as a staff, and the mayor would never support that. I know that. That's fact, and I know you wouldn't either. So we've talked about all the benefits, but investing $50 million versus this bond instrument returns us not only to hope the average of what we've had, the 10 million a year, but we get economic development benefits to Farnsworth, up and down the corridor, as well as downtown as well as downtown Aurora. Now, there have been people saying, how is that possible? Why is that going to be possible? Well, we've had some folks in the last few weeks from public input and public feedback ask us to gather the factors that the casino used, along with the city, for certain projections. And so let me, and I'm, I don't believe I'm going to give away any secret sauce information here, but first and foremost, the increased exposure from I-88. These are facts. The new location will receive 107,000 vehicles per day versus 8,000 that go down New York Street. That's a 13 time increase in vehicular traffic. Number two, the proximity to the outlet mall. I mentioned earlier, Simon, the Chicago Premium Outlets, is back. They're at 90, sorry, give me the percentage.
Ninety-three percent.
Ninety-three percent leased. Go there, try going there on the weekend. I have to go in the evenings just to shop there because it's so crowded on the weekends. So their proximity, directly across the street from the outlet mall, which receives 8 million visitors a year. The inclusion of a 200-room hotel and a special event space. Connecting a full-service four-star hotel and an entertainment space to a state-of-the-art casino creates a resort experience. A resort experience we do not have in the downtown and does not have, we don't have access to. That will provide the additional incremental revenue sources that will make up the expected projection. Lastly, providing a new competitive product in the market versus today's offering. Better equipped to compete in the Illinois market with this integrated resort approach, especially against the proliferations of VGTs and future competition. And if you look at the future competition, we are ahead of the game. Chicago has yet to get their legs under them, and at best, they're going to locate in the former Medina Temple building. Rockford's is in a temporary location, they do not have a resort or any amenities. Rivers is landlocked, has, does not have these amenities. Grand Victoria, landlocked, and by the way, Grand Victoria is spending $4 million, that was just publicly announced, versus 360 million in relocating the casino. So plainly put, it did not take a lot to figure out the downward trend of the casino would eventually lead to no casino. Now, I recently talked to a former mayor, I was not here then, about the Chicago Premium Outlet Mall. And the Chicago Premium Outlet Mall, ultimately, it came down to that location or not in Aurora at all. So let's briefly look back at that history. The most successful TIF in the state of Illinois, if not one of the most successful in the And that has become one of our four pillars of revenue for the city of Aurora that allows us to fund everything else. And why it's so important for us to move the casino, that's why we're, staff is strongly recommending that this deal move forward. And I want to thank the folks at Penn for their past partnership for these past 30 years, their past philanthropy to our community, and that we look forward to this future with this new transformative development. So we have folks from Penn here, we have staff to answer any questions.
Questions from the Alderman. Alderman Warman.
Thank you for the presentation. My question is, is, what I've heard is, how's this affect District 131? Could you shed some more light on how this helps 131 and, and how this comes into play?
So we did talk, and I'm going to have Chris say it, to talk also, but we had a finance committee meeting earlier today, and in our budget, one of the issues was that TIF 1 is expiring. When a TIF does what it's supposed to do, at the end of a successful TIF, property valuation rises. And after the TIF is done, every taxing body then takes advantage and applies its tax levy to the new property value. So in this case, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, when, what I saw on your, on your slide, the impact on 131 was half a million dollars, and the impact on 129 was $387,000. So Mr. Minnick is in the process of instructing those taxing bodies, actually, we're going to instruct all the taxing bodies, what they need to do to properly adjust their levy for 2023 to start realizing those revenues going forward. And again, the same bump happened after the Simon Outlet TIF expired. And we have every confidence that it will happen with this situation. And it's even different now because we're not broadly throwing the net for large TIFs anymore. We're doing micro TIFs. So micro TIFs are limited to the boundaries of the redevelopment deal. So working with Penn, working with economic development, we established what additional land we needed to assemble to the three city-owned parcels to create a micro TIF, nothing beyond those boundaries for the same type of a TIF that we've had across the street at the outlet mall.
Yes, Chris Minnick, on behalf of the Finance Department. Actually, Mr. Alexander did a great job of summarizing exactly the impact when TIF 1 expires. There will be approximately a $500,000 revenue availability that District 131 will have the opportunity to avail themselves of. So, and additionally, once the existing casino property is transferred to the city and ultimately redeveloped, any new additional property taxes from that new development would inure to the benefit of District 131.
Thank you. Any other questions? Alderman Yamas.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I do want to add to the question that Alderman Warman just had, and that you two answered. One thing that I don't think was mentioned, it was a reference earlier during public comments to an article in The Beacon by Denise Crosby, and something that was left out, but I think is very important should be mentioned, is that District 131, including the school board president and the superintendent, are in support of this project. They're supportive of the casino relocating, and they know that it's in the best interest of the city and of the district because it is not going to be a financial loss to them. They are running a tight ship over there, and they're doing a great job, just as we are, and we're going to continue to work together. Just wanted to make that comment, but I do have a question about the RDA. Let me just pull it up. I like to think in worst-case scenarios, so I have this question here, I didn't see it in the RDA, but I may have missed it. What would happen in a situation where we sell the bond and the casino, for whatever reason, isn't able to maybe secure financing to go through with a deal? What position would we be in with regard to that bond?
Were we to issue the bond, and if for some reason the, the project would not go forward, we would take the bond proceeds and essentially pay off the bond.
And we could do that immediately?
Once we were aware that there would, that we would not be moving forward, yes, that would be, that would be what we would ultimately do.
All right, thank you.
And if I can just add to that, I've been in local government for 32 years. If we, and over the years, if we've dealt with an inexperienced group, a novice group, the risk increases exponentially. Here, we are dealing with a group, they're very well-known to us, they've been a partner in Aurora for 30 years, they are, there is no denying, they are a billion-dollar corporation. All the more reason for us to feel comfortable that this deal and these deal points are going to succeed. They are the subject matter experts in this industry. They're one of the number-one gaming companies in the world. And so, when they bring us projections, and when they bring us, you know, we looked at their properties down in St. Louis, casino resorts, and how well they did before COVID, how well they're doing since COVID. Their acquisition of likely the number one, at least my two sons tell me, it's the number one sportsbook brand in the country, Barstool Sports. The fact that Barstool Sports will be involved in the Aurora Casino is another differentiator above where people choose to go and gamble. And so, we're looking at their pro forma, what they've done, the people they have in key positions, and again, they're, many of them are here tonight, they instill nothing but confidence based on their past performance, what they're doing in other communities, and what's anticipated going forward. And the deals that were announced, the only one that GLPI, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, guaranteed is the Aurora Casino Resort. Joliet and their other two, one in Columbus, Ohio, and one in Las Vegas, are TBD, to be determined. But Aurora is guaranteed, and so, time is of the essence because we cannot gamble the future of this existing casino and the future of the gaming funds that we desperately need to fund what we talked about. The sooner we get it done, the sooner it opens, while the existing casino will continue to operate and smoothly transition to the new casino.
Questions?
Mr. Mayor. Thank you. So, everything goes well, and in 10 years, suppose they say we want to move out of this location, what happens to the bond money in that case?
I'm, I'm sorry, so after 10 years, they decide...
To move out of Aurora for some reason?
They still have the contractual guarantee to provide more than 5 point, 5.25 million dollars between the property taxes and the guaranteed payment. So that would, that obligation continues for as long as bonds are outstanding, per the RDA.
They will be paying that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Questions? I'm sorry, Alderman Seale.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Want to say a few words about tonight. And I'll give you a little bit of a history, I guess, of how we got to here. I was on the original ad hoc subcommittee in 1991, made up of business community members in Aurora wanting the casino to have an opportunity to come to Aurora and to lobby the, the Aurora community and the city council to consider the casino. The economic quarter that we're talking about, though, is an underutilized economic quarter on Farnsworth. It's never really achieved its potential. We're almost there with the premium outlet mall, but we need more. When it was approved in 1991, I personally witnessed the benefit in my ward with the improvements that were made. Money was plowed into my ward, as it was other wards in the city. Neighborhoods benefited from that, social service agencies benefited substantially from that. In fact, I can be here honestly and say that casino revenue literally saved my ward. And I can go, I can go up and down the streets today and show you the successes that we made in allocating the resources from the casino revenue to people in my ward that I represent and benefit from that. When the casino first came to downtown Aurora, if you remember what Aurora was like in the downtown area, nobody was here, hardly. Nobody. There was people struggling, yes, doing the best they can, but it was, it wasn't the all-encompassing economic development engine, but it was a portent part of the puzzle that brought legitimacy to downtown Aurora that we hadn't seen with any other business for quite some time. And what did we receive from that in the downtown? We received, we received capital projects that weren't happening at the time. We built Riverwalks, we built Streetscape. And today, the downtown looks a million percent better than it did in 1991. And I'd like to say too, that if this development is approved tonight, there's Aurora children living in the Batavia School District that will directly benefit from this casino if there's a positive vote tonight. So I voted for the Holakwood Casino in 1991, based on what we've heard with staff and the presentations and the meetings that we had. The increased economic activity with the five to six restaurants, sportsbook, the hotel, the, I think the economic activity would spin up possibly with the premium outlets is a, is a good piece of the puzzle for this area of our city. And with the agreement that we have with the downtown and demolition of what's there now, handing it over to the city, we get, acquire the two parking decks for, for more parking, I think it's a win-win for, for the community, and I'll be supporting this this evening.
Questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Buck.
Thank you. I intentionally did not speak at the committee the whole meeting last week because I try and do as much research as I can on each issue. And, so I didn't want to speak last week. Go back to the purchase of the land. Okay? The city of Aurora owns the land. And why is that? Because we had the opportunity, we had the knowledge that we wanted to control our own destiny on Farnsworth Avenue. And we always look at things in a global way, in a big-picture way. The I-88, 290 corridor. So if you think in your minds, you know what the worst use of an interchange on I-88, 290, if you think about it for a second, what is that? The Hillside landfill, remember that? You drive on 290, and you get on there, and all of a sudden, you would smell stench because they had a landfill right on the highway. Well, thankfully, the mayor's office and this team, we wanted to take control of our interchange. So we purchased the property ourselves because we didn't want someone else to take control of our interchange in Aurora. So that's an example of what not to do. Don't put a landfill on your interchange. And Hillside, thankfully, has turned that around. They're just paying off their $30 million lawsuit this year on that. So you have the I-88 interchange, and of course, we have our premium outlet mall. 8.5 million people a year visit the mall, millions from not in the region, outside of the Fox Valley area. So people come to Aurora, sometimes on an airplane, sometimes on a motor coach bus, and come to our outlet mall. Where do they stay, though? They get on that motor coach bus, and they come to our outlet mall, and they get back on the motor coach bus, and they go to a hotel in one of our neighboring towns. And they go to dinner in a restaurant in one of our neighboring towns. And then they get back on the motor boat, motor bus the next day and go back to the outlet mall. And then they go back to the hotel, many times in the city to the east of us, and they go eat on Freedom Drive. And then that bus goes back to their Midwest town, or goes to O'Hare, and they get on an airplane and leave. Thankfully, this administration has the foresight that that needs to change. And if we were just voting on moving a casino, I don't have to vote on that, thankfully, because we're not just voting on a casino. We're voting on an entertainment complex with a world-class hotel, with restaurants in there, top restaurants, and this is the beginning of this, not the end. The revenue will grow exponentially. Now, I said I always like to do some research. So what does it take to either get a casino or keep a casino? So I called up and talked to my friends in Des Plaines. I have a friend who was on Des Plaines City Council, when they were going a lot of... I have a friend who was on Displanes City Council when they were going a lot of things through Rivers. And in the last month, usually when I go to O'Hare, I usually get to O'Hare, my appointment near there, and as soon as my appointment's over, you get the heck out of there. You leave, you get on the highway and go back to Aurora. I drove around Displanes. I drove around Rivers Casino a couple times. Housing, businesses around there. Actually, Rivers does not have the hotel that Displanes was promised. They don't have that yet. That is what we're looking at today. This entertainment complex will be a game changer. The people will stay in the hotel in Aurora. They will eat their meals in Aurora. Nothing against the food court at the outlet mall, but that's not going to cut it anymore. That's not going to cut it anymore. The Displanes River Casino, and I want everyone to listen to this, what did it take for Displanes to get that license? Because we already have our license, thankfully. The casino license is here in Aurora. What did it take for Displanes to get their casino license? Their initial promise to the state, $10 million a year for 30 years. Do the math, $300 million. That's initial. After that amount of taxes, the next 40% of taxes goes to other suburbs around the Chicagoland area. Approximately $6 million. After that, Displanes gets $9 million a year. $300 million is what Displanes promised to get their license. And we're talking about a game-changing development and a $50 million bond out of money that is only increment money. So what does that mean? If there's no increment going up, there's no money. Mr. Alexandria alluded just briefly, and nobody wants to talk about it. We have a great relationship with the casino, but they're not promised to stay in Aurora. Is the state of Illinois, are they issuing new casino licenses in the upcoming years? The answer is yes. We know about Chicago already, but they're issuing other licenses. So is it guaranteed that they stay here? No, it's not. I feel like, well, I won't speak for them, but we have a great relationship with the casino. Mr. Alexandria talked about the amount of funds that go to nonprofits, to various social, economic businesses and entities. I don't even want to think about it if it goes away. So think about those things, think about those other towns, and hey, what if? I-88 corridor, I know you could talk to people in those towns, and they would love to have a casino come to town, love it.
Are there any other questions from the council?
Now sign a fucking petition, fuck all of you.
Mr. Mayor. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Mayor. Alderman Jenkins.
You know, I think from what I've heard from my colleagues here, you know, I can be one who, I guess, could say I've been around a while, and I've been here when the casino opened in 93. You know, there was a whole lot of excitement. And there's a number of you I see in the audience who was here, and everybody talked about the flying Elvai and Frank Sinatra performing at the Paramount, never had that. You know, but now Hollywood Casino has stepped forward again and said that they are going to compete in this market and bring Aurora a new facility. They could have said, hey, we're out of here. The casino's going to be located across the street from a development that some folks in this room and watching on Facebook told us, don't do it. The Chicago Premium Outlet Mall. Yeah, that's what I got. Don't do it, don't do it. And you know what? The initial estimate for us to receive from the sales tax was $2.5 million. Today, we are receiving over $6.5 million, and it's one of the prime instruments in our city that continues to bring the revenue for us. And now, think about it now. If it wasn't there, would we be talking about the casino going across the street from it? No. We are Illinois' second-largest city, and we are again being asked to step to the plate and invest in our future. There is no major development in this country that doesn't request any financial investment by a municipality to show buy-in and long-term commitment. Come on, folks, you saying you did your homework? You did your research? Look at it. Do your research. You don't see any major development that doesn't go to a municipality or state and ask and say, we need this in order to make this happen. How many of you have been to Dallas, Texas, and the Dallas Cowboys? Come on, let's be realistic. Aurora will be a city that a lot of people, as my colleague said, are going to be envious of us tonight, and I am in favor, and I am one also who's going to be unfolding in favor of this. It is best for our future, and many of you will be out there with your friends enjoying that facility. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Jenkins. Alderman Hart Burns.
Alex, Devo, Trevor, Chris, can y'all come to the mic, please? Devo? Mr. Mayor, council, this administration, your administration, Mr. Mayor, has followed through with this big idea, and meaningful one of a kind. Thank you. You're doing it, you did it. But what about the projects that you've done also? Let's talk about it. The old Copley project, now we have what? Bloomhaven. Look at Pacific Square. What was there? Almost a totally empty building. Now we have Pacific Square. Thank you. And don't leave out what you just, what about the groundwork you just went to, the old schools that's been closed, now we have new development coming to the schools? And please do not forget the Fox Valley Mall, almost totally closed, but this team came together, now we have housing, and getting ready now to build senior housing. Mr. Mayor, this is your administration. And please, please, let us not forget our union. Thank you for the fine job that you've been doing and have done. Let us not, and let us not forget this vote on this night is for one of our greatest companies that we have in Aurora that has brought us money. Now, I've been around for a long time, so I do remember 30 years ago, but I'm here to say, Mr. Mayor, this cabinet right here has gotten together and brought us something we all can vote on, and we all know that is good for us. So this Hollywood Entertainment Complex will bring the money to Aurora like you brought before. We are grateful for you and your position and the love that you've shown to this community because you stand another 30 years. Do I hear amen? I'm grateful for the 30 years that you've shared with us, and you'll move on Farnsworth to make Farnsworth even beautiful. I'm waiting for action, lights come to Aurora. We're ready for service. Do I get another amen? Welcome home, again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, staff, thank you.
You know, this development is going to change the face of our city for generations to come. There is something happening here in Aurora, and we see it happening right before our eyes. And we appreciate Penn Gaming and Hollywood Casino being part of the revival, renewal of the city of Aurora. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masseyakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderwoman Hart Burns?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
12 yes, 0 no.
Motion carries. The ordinance is approved. Will the, first of all, let's give Penn Gaming a round of applause. Will the, will the members of Hollywood, Penn Gaming that are here with a stand-down, we're going to sign this proclamation right now, this ordinance.
Get to stepping.
And any Alderman that wants to join me down here.
Come on, Jim, come on.
Come on, let's all go.
We're rolling.
Let's all go.
Come on, Ed.
Come on, Ed.
Come on.
Let it.
Oh, go ahead. Again, as I stated, as we sit here signing this ordinance into law in the city of Aurora, this development is going to change the face of our community, our city, the great city of Aurora, the second-largest city in the state for generations to come. And we appreciate you gentlemen willing to invest in the city of Aurora, and I appreciate the Alderman willing to recognize that for entities, for organizations to invest in Aurora, we've got to be willing to invest in ourselves. So it is my honor to sign this ordinance here this evening.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman, Alderwoman, we are so appreciative of the city of Aurora and all of you guys today for the support on this development of the new Hollywood Casino in Aurora, and your visionary leadership that you had for the last four years on this, the same as Alexandria and his staff. We're so appreciative to that. We are committed to build something really special here in Aurora, what we budgeted today at a minimum $360 million economic engine to create hundreds of construction jobs and hundreds of permanent jobs as well. So thank you so much for your trust, and we couldn't be happier of what happened today. Thank you.
Let's give them a round of applause. Oh, you know what? Before we move on, let's, you know what? As we plan for the I-88 corridor and as people drive up, either east or west, coming to the city of Aurora, we want to show you what people will be seeing now as they drive into the city of Aurora. Look at this. Exit and come to the Hollywood Casino right off the expressway on Farnsworth in the city of Aurora. Today, the light is shining a little brighter, a whole lot brighter, in the city of Aurora. There's something happening here, can you feel it? All right. All right, let's do a group picture. All right, let's finish up the rest of this agenda. Is there a motion to suspend the rules to consider items in our new business? Motion made by Alderman Hart Burns, second by Alderman Seville. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masseyakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderwoman Hart Burns?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
12 yes, 0 no.
Motion carries. Clerk, will you please read the title of the first item in our new business?
22-0861, a resolution pursuant to Section 2-277 of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to the qualifications of department huts.
They'll move.
All right, there's been a motion made by Alderman Hart Burns, second by Alderman Jenkins. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? There being none, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masseyakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderwoman Hart Burns?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
12 yes, 0 no.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Is there a motion to approve and pay the bills?
They'll move.
Second.
List on the agenda, there's been a motion made by Alderman Franco, second by Alderman Garza. Are there any questions or discussions on the bills? There being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masseyakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderwoman Hart Burns?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
12 yes, 0 no. Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Motion carries. Bill is approved. There's been a motion to adjourn this meeting by Alderman Hart Burns, second by Alderman Garza. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good meeting, y'all. Motion, meeting is adjourned.